Pledge, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about each of them. So with the folks who we are recognizing, please come down. I believe Tom West is here, James Waters is here. Who else is here? Bob McKnight. Okay, so gentlemen, you go right to the front. Where is Kip? There's Kip. Okay, good. So you can go to the podium and get right in the camera. Okay. So I'm gonna tell you, we have three veterans who are not with us. They are participating remotely this evening. But I'm gonna start, we're gonna start with Tom West. So Tom West, retired US Army, First Lieutenant, Army Infantry Officer from 1964 through 1966, stationed at the Pentagon in the Office of the Secretary of Defense. Then we have James Waters, US Navy Lieutenant Commander, US Navy SEALs, served from 2006 to 2018, served in combat in Afghanistan, awarded the Bronze Star Joint Services Commendation Medal with Valor. Then we have Bob McKnight, next to him, US Army Staff Sergeant, Vietnam Combat Veteran, Combat LLRP, Long Range Reconnaissance Patrol Specialist, and he served from 1967 through 1970. And then we have, at the end, Kip Bergweger, US Army Vietnam Veteran, served from 1964 through 1966. He was involved with military intelligence and received the Bronze Star for meritorious service. So we're gonna... Wait, wait, wait. We also have three veterans who are not here, but I do wanna read them and recognize them. So Walter Off, Skip Off, is a US Army Vietnam Veteran. He served from 1968 through 1971. He served as part of Team 88, Macon Delta Region, and was awarded the Bronze Star. We also have Yan Niffen, US Army Vietnam Veteran, served, I'm sorry, US Air Force Captain, Vietnam Veteran. He served from 1970 through 1976, and he also actively served in the Yom Kippur War in 1973. And then finally, we have Daniel Izzo, US Army Captain, graduate of West Point, served in the Army from 1998 through 2010 as a Black Hawk helicopter pilot. He's a veteran of both the Iraq and Afghanistan wars, and he was awarded the Bronze Star for meritorious service. So I'd also like to give them a final... And now, gentlemen, I invite you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a couple of other announcements. Is District Nine doing the tribute for Betsy Fruman this evening?
Yes.
Abby Large, member of District Nine, who is offering a tribute for Betsy Fruman, who was the previous Chair of District Nine.
We rise to honor our beloved District Nine Chair, Betsy Ray Fruman. She passed away July 31st, 2024, with a battle, after a battle with cancer. And she battled it with great dignity and grace and courage. Betsy was born in Bridgeport and graduated Skidmore College with a mathematics degree. She was a computer programmer in her early work life and settled with her husband Arnold in Greenwich in 1965. She raised three children, Greg, Ken, and Amy. Betsy was a very engaged and committed parent, and she participated in PTAs at Glenville School, in Brunswick, Greenwich Country Day, and Greenwich High School, where she was also the PTA President. She also volunteered for the Kids in Crisis Hotline, the Red Cross, and the Portchester Obedience Training Club. In other words, Betsy was always interested in making the lives of her friends and her neighbors better, and she practiced what she preached. Betsy also dedicated her considerable talent and energy to the RTM. She served multiple terms over 29 years, from 1976 to 1985, and from 2004 to 2024, and was the district's fierce leader for the past 20 years. To say that she has left a giant chair to fill on District Nine is a gross misunderstanding, understatement. We miss her a lot. Her work, her consistency, her dedication, her excellence. She was the District Nine Chair, and she elevated the work that the district was able to do over the past 20 years. She was thorough and always did her homework. She added substance and wealth of information to everything the RTM covered. She always made sure everyone had a chance to be heard and respected everyone's opinions with her even temperament, and that helped District Nine avoid a lot of conflicts. Betsy could always be a force when she needed to be. I don't know if you remember her stomping up to the podium and sharing her thoughts. But man, she took no prisoners. And she inspired so many with her passion, her leadership, and her absolute no-nonsense attitude, which we loved. She made herself available as district chair to fill in gaps at committee meetings, likely hundreds of them over the years, and stepped in for so many members to make sure that District Nine was always represented. She cared about her community. She cared about our town. And she cared about giving her fellow citizens a voice and competent representation in town government. Betsy was the best of the RTM. District Nine wants to express its most sincere condolences to Betsy's family and friends. It truly was an honor to serve with her.
Thank you. Would the members please rise and, as we offer a moment of silence in honor of Betsy Fruman? Thank you. Josh Brown is gonna talk about recruitment efforts for Labor Contracts Committee.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, fellow members. She just took my thunder. Labor Contracts Committee, we need members to join. We currently now have five members. We lost one who's resigned from the RTM. We have a total of seven delegates and two alternates. So we're looking for five, at least to come forward, at least for, to come forward to, to fill out the roles of the LCC. It's not a whole lot of heavy lifting. I've heard some rumors that people think it's a whole lot of work. There are moments, there are times where you have to roll up our sleeves, but that tends to track along with the contracts, and sometimes there are ebbs and flows through that process. So if there's anybody interested, please reach out to me. I'll be sending out another email through the system. Please, if you have any interest, wanna explore it, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think you've seen some of the good work that our committee has been doing. You've received the notes of our meetings, so you understand a little bit what, what's been going on. So please reach out if you have any interest. Thank you.
Do you wanna tell them a little bit about some of the skill sets that are helpful on that?
I, I can, Madam Moderator.
It's like an interest rodeo, Mr. Brown. You've done the shares for a while.
Done it a few times. So anybody that has any HR, any talent experience, anybody that's done any labor negotiations in the past. We do a little financial analysis, but it's really around benefits, insurances, anything in that area. Because again, it's looking at the employee, the employee package that we give to them as benefits, their gross wage increases. This committee was helpful to encourage the town's negotiator, Pete, to be effectively one of the first towns in the town, in the state of Connecticut, to introduce a defined contribution plan to move to the state partnership, which is the medical benefits program. So we've been leaders in coming up and applying creative approaches to what the town's facing as an employer. So we have a variety of backgrounds that, that we can look at. You'd be surprised. You know, I, I do risk management. I've done contract negotiations, but I look at benefits, I look at risks from, from an employer perspective and what's possible. So a variety of possibilities. Thank you.
I think that concludes our announcements, unless I've missed somebody and you wanna let me know. As all members have received a copy of the minutes from the September 2024 meeting, the reading of those minutes shall be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to our September minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the September minutes stand adopted upon unanimous consent. I notified the membership that I would recommend the following items, or the following organization of our call. Consent items. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6, leaving, no combined items this evening, leaving for the separate calendar, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. Pursuant to our rules, I will designate items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 to our consent calendar. And if those items remain on the consent calendar, all you will hear is what I'm about to say. Item 1, the nomination of Lawrence Enbrogno to be an alternate member of the Fair Rent Commission for a term expiring July 1st, 2025. Item 2, the nomination of Conrad Levy to be a regular member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring June 30th, 2027. Item 3, the nomination of Catherine Myers to be a regular member of the Board of Health for a term expiring June 30th, 2028. Okay, is that better? Item 4, the nomination of Jenny Larkin to be a regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring October 31st, 2028. And item 6 is the nomination of Joe Kelly to be a regular member of the Central Middle School Building Committee. Are there any objections to those items on our consent calendar? Okay. Craig, could you please prepare the, the vote? You'll, everyone will have one minute to cast your vote. We're gonna... Okay. So consent calendar items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. You'll have one minute to cast your vote. Craig, could you open the, the window, please? Okay, the vote on the consent calendar is 174 in favor. Those voting no, zero, with six abstentions. Those items have carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay. That brings us to the first of our separate calendar items, which I anticipate being postponed. Is someone, could someone please read item 5 into the record for us? Who's offering the nomination? Mr. McKnight or Mr., Mr. McKnight? You're probably gonna postpone it. So would you like to read it in and then we'll go from there? Bob McKnight, Chairman of our Appointments Committee.
Resolved that the following 80 person nominated by Board of Selectment, be appointed an alternate member of Planning and zoning Board of Appeals, A2, for a term expiring October 31st, 2028. Robert Nallya-Watje.
Thank you. Wait, 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 wait. We need to get a second and get it before us. So hang on for a second. Is there a, okay, second. The item has been moved in second and is now before us. Mr. McKnight.
Committee voted to postpone the nomination.
Okay. Land use, are you concurring with that? Would you like to? Okay. We can adopt the motion to postpone upon unanimous consent. If anyone objects, we can take a record vote. Does anyone object to postponing item 5 to our December meeting? Hearing none, that item has been postponed to December 2024. Okay, that brings us to item number 7, which is the fire truck. Do we have someone here from the fire department to offer or read that resolution in? Okay. I'm sorry, who's reading it? And I, I believe we need a substitute resolution for this because the item on the call as written needs to amend the account.
Good evening. Resolved that the sum of $1,565,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to the various accounts. A206-54200, $150,000. And A207-54250, $150,000.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved in second. It is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item? Beginning with, who's going first? James Waters of the Budget Overview Committee?
Good evening. The Budget Overview Committee voted 11-0-0 to approve this interim appropriation. Assistant Chief Justin McCarthy attended our meeting and walked us through all components of cost for this funding. He described why it was necessary as an interim appropriation, given the summer's accident that resulted in a total loss of Engine 1. Assistant Chief McCarthy explained the fire department's now two engines behind its, in its replacement plan with a 20-year-old reserve truck being used as a temporary replacement. According to the town's risk manager, the town will receive $800,000 for the totaled fire truck. The fire department's ordering a duplicate of a fire truck already on order. Hopeful this will bring the lead time down from 40 months to 12 to 18 months. There are two items BOC would like to flag to the RTM. The first is that this incident highlights the importance of prudent funding of the fire department's replacement plan, especially given rising costs the last several years and lengthy lead times today. Fire trucks have been cut from the town budget in recent years, which unfortunately has put us at just one accident away from hampering the department's ability to serve our residents. Second, the town got lucky here in that the town risk manager and insurance broker were able to retroactively and prospectively change the current insurance policy, which is the only reason the town is receiving $800,000. Unfortunately, with this particular claim, the other vehicle was not insured, or there may have been additional funds available. Risk Manager Megan Demato told me today that she's also looking into whether there is any FEMA funding available for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Brown, Chairman of our Town Services Committee.
Madam Moderator, fellow members and guests, Town Services met. We voted 10-0-0 in favor of the item in addition to what BOC reported on. We had heard that a, a town had pulled out of having a fire truck built. And so the manufacturer was able to slide ours in. So as Mr. Waters indicated, they're building kind of two identical at the same time. So we're very fortunate in that regard. That was pretty much the extent of it. The, the two line items for maintenance and equipment is to replace the equipment that's on the fire truck. It's all been tested, much of it needs to be replaced. And then they have to restore or repair two of the fire engines that are seeing a lot more use now because we're down an engine. So that's the need for 10-0-0.
Thank you. Greg Zorthian, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, fellow members of the RTM and guests. The RTM Finance Committee met last Monday on this issue. We heard from Assistant Chief Charlie Lupewiki. He took us through the details of why we need this truck. He explained to what we had, the questions on the insurance, which has been covered, the state of the current fleet, which has no backups at this point, and the procedures that led to the accident. There was no fault of ours on the way we set up on the highway. There has been a recommendation that we change how we, we set up for accidents with an incentive attenuator truck, which will be effectively a much cheaper blocking truck when you do an accident. We talked about state liability. That is a, not, not, that's very confusing. And then the maintenance with the Greenwich Fleet Department, Fleet Maintenance Area. We were satisfied that we were doing the best we can on this, and the vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. That concludes the three committees that took this up. No one has signed up to debate the issue, but if anyone would like to come up now and say anything, you're welcome to do so. Otherwise, I'm gonna move to the vote. Does anyone wanna say anything about it? Okay. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? This is for item 7, $1.565 million for Engine 1 GFD fire truck. Okay. If you are in favor of this appropriation, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. You have one minute. Craig, could you please open the, the voting window? Thank you. Has everybody voted who would like to cast their vote? Because we're gonna close the window. Okay. Let's see. She's right there, 13. Mills is the second one. It is, it's, it's lit up. Okay? Okay. So has everybody now voted that would like to vote? Because I'm gonna close it. Mr. Meskers, you have, you are blue. Yes. Anyone else that? There are also screens over there. Okay, is everyone okay? Okay, we're gonna close it. Could you please close the vote? Okay. The vote on item 7, which was the appropriation for the fire truck. Those in favor, 179. Opposing, zero, abstaining, one. That item has carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay. That now brings us to item 8, which is the bonding resolution for this item. Who is introducing that resolution? The, who's coming down to introduce it? We just need someone.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of $1.265 million in bonds.
You can just say the item is, is, it appears on the call. We don't wanna hear three pages. Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with James Waters, Chairman of our BOC?
Good evening. The Budget Overview Committee voted 11-0-0 to approve this bonding resolution. BOC voted on this alongside the interim appropriation, and no objections were raised to the bonding resolution.
Thank you. Josh Brown, Chairman of our Town Services Committee.
Madam Moderator, fellow members and guests. Town Services voted on this 7-0-3. Seven in favor and three abstaining. We went through the authorization. We had a discussion that with $1.265 million needed, with $800,000 coming in, the net cash is $450,000. Um, we went through the authorization. We had a discussion that with one point two six five million needed with eight hundred thousand dollars coming in, the net cash is four hundred and fifty, you know, rounded numbers. Didn't think that that was necessary even at one point to uh, to have a bonding. Uh, so the three that voted abstain- uh, that abstained uh, felt that there was not a need for it and uh, didn't understand why we're seeking to bond for such a small amount. Seven zero three.
Thank you. Greg Zorthian, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. Now it's going to get interesting. The Finance Committee voted three, four, three, four to five and five to reject it, three, four, or against it, and five abstaining. Um, the yeses were D one, D five, and D eleven. The nos were D two, D three, D eight, and D nine. And the abstentions were D four, D six, D eight, D ten, and D twelve. Um, D two felt the town should be, uh, should pay cash rather than borrow as the amount, net amount was quite low, two hundred plus thousand dollars. D ten abstained as he felt that and and said he would do so going forward unless it was an emergency. As he felt there had not been an adequate review of the capital budget. Uh, there was a general consensus in the committee uh, that the long term capital spending, planning, and borrowing process needs to be improved. Um, there is a feeling that we are still think of projects at the two hundred, uh, twenty million dollar expenditure level, when in fact they are much more expensive in the close to a hundred million dollar levels, and we need to adjust our approach to borrowing to take this into account. Uh, so it's a, it's a complicated uh, situation. Um, driving here today, I I was thinking about this more and I voted for it. And what I realize is we were talking about borrowing one point five million at three percent, three to four percent, which is our current rate. We get, if we borrow that and prepay for this engine, we get a thirteen percent discount. Now, I haven't crunched the numbers, but it sure sounds like the, to me, we might save some money if we borrowed and paid you at three percent and saved thirteen percent. Uh, I, as I said, I voted for it, but um, the committee as a whole rejected it and uh, I'm uh, reporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, debate on item eight. We have one individual who's signed up. Brooks Harris.
Hello. Uh, first I want to make clear that I support our purchase of the new fire truck equipment. And I actually agree that we're several trucks behind. That's not before us tonight, but uh, rejecting this debt authorization will not affect this purchase. Pete Menarski, our controller, has confirmed if we reject this debt authorization, there's more than enough excess cash in the capital nonrecurring fund to pay for this without endangering any other element of our budget. I'm opposing authorizing more debt unless urgently needed until the R T M and the Finance Committee in particular has reviewed the capital budget and educated members to the risks and opportunities associated with our plan. Before we authorize more debt, we must understand the consequences of that borrowing. As we fund the school's master plan and other capital projects, our spending far exceeds the money we put aside to pay for these projects. Over the next five years, we'll put aside three hundred and twenty million dollars. And our total financing requirement is over six hundred and seventy million dollars. Will future repayments put a strain on us? Will we have to raise taxes more than we want? Will we have to forego additional capital projects or worse, operating expenditures in the future? Will our credit rating be weakened? The only way to answer these questions is to review the capital budget over a period of time. Just recently, we approved large expenditures for C M S and O G. These were urgent and critical, and I voted for them. But it will be years before we feel the effect of these allocations, and yet we have so much more to come. Twenty-three million dollars for Havemeyer, twelve million for Julian Curtis, thirty mil- thirty-two million for I S G, I S D, thirty-four million for North Street, not to mention thirty-eight million needed for A D A and H VAC. And these are all numbers. The actual numbers are probably going to be much higher. And this is just the schools. What about the Northwest Fire Station? The R T M passed the somer asking that for that, but I'm skeptical that this will ever happen. And the Hamill Rink? The rink is undersized. Uh, nonregulation, and we're asking our high school hockey team to make do with that in Greenwich. And now this year's budget includes a new one hundred million dollar expenditure or more for the sewers. The R T M is charged with approving capital expenditures and debt issuance. To do that responsibly, our decision must be informed by an appropriate review and analysis. I cannot vote authorize more debt unless it's an emergency until this has been undertaken. I believe the following actions are needed for us to assert we've done our best to make informed financing decisions. A couple of people came to me and said, well, what should we do? When will you be comfortable voting on new debt? I said, there are three steps I recommend. First, the Finance Committee should review the capital investment plan, which is a fifteen year list of all capital projects submitted to the town by the town departments and approved by the first selectmen and the B E T. This review should include a prioritization of the projects as well as recommendations for what may be cut, reduced, or indeed added. This analysis already exists and is ready for our review. Secondly, the Finance Committee should review the funding schedule, which is a capital spending model projecting debt, taxes, and borrowing over the next fifteen years. This analysis already exists, but it shows our debt doubling and B E T guidelines being exceeded in years five through seven. We must review this and assess whether we're comfortable with these violations. And then finally, the Finance Committee should present the findings and recommendation, recommendations to the full R T M and in a public forum. I mean, it's important that you guys understand all this stuff and it's it's unlikely that we can expect you to pass through a six hundred page budget, but we should summarize it for you so you can know what we're going to do. If you want more fire trucks and I want more fire trucks, you'll be able to say that. I'm not voting to approve any more discretionary debt funding until we make sure every member knows what they need to make an informed decision. I'm voting no on this debt authorization and intend the purchase to be funded from our capital nonrecurring account. I know most people will be tempted to approve this debt. It's immaterial to our budget, and there's something very cathartic about using the rubber stamp. But if you vote yes, people may assume you reject an interest in more thorough review of our capital plan. As you have heard, the Finance Committee voted no on this to encourage a more fulsome capital budget review. Now the full body must vote no and request the review you need and are entitled to. You know insisting on this review is the right thing. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on this issue? Brooks was the only person who signed up, but if anyone else wants to come to the podium before I call for the vote, you're welcome to. Okay. Okay, I don't see anybody coming to the podium. Okay, Craig, will you please prepare the vote on item eight? If you are in favor of bonding for the fire truck, one point two, six, five million dollars, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to that bonding resolution, you would vote no. There you go.
Okay.
Yep, if, uh, Craig, could you please open the vote? You'll have one minute on the clock. Okay, there you go. You may cast your vote. Has everybody cast their vote who would like to vote? Okay, Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay. I have the vote on um, the bonding resolution. Those in favor, eighty-four. Those opposed, eighty-four. Abstaining ten. I am not casting a tie breaking vote. That motion has failed. Craig, could you please? Okay. Yes. Oh, um, you are. You're you're correct. It it requires, excellent point, Mr. Methurst. It still would fail. You need to have a hundred and sixteen members in the affirmative. So it's still failed, but thank you very much for that. Thank you. Sorry. Um, okay, so that item has still failed. Great catch. Needed a hundred and sixteen, so we're still below the threshold. Um, so now we're going to move on to the Launa contract, which is item number nine.
Good evening, good evening. Um, item nine, resolved that representative town meeting exercising the sort of authority pursuant to general statutes, seven dash four, seven, four, Bravo. And the fiscal twenty-four to twenty-six budget resolution hereby rejects the use of the funds necessary to implement the terms of the Connecticut Public Service Employees, uh, one thirty-six Laborers International uh, of North America. And be it further resolved that the R T M rejects any terms such agreement which may be in conflict with town charter, special act ordinance, rule or regulations adopted by the municipal floor or its agents of the town.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with Josh Brown of the Labor Contracts Committee.
Madam Moderator, fellow members and guests, uh, I'll give two reports. First is Labor Contracts Committee. Our vote was zero four, zero, so voting against the rejection. Uh, we prefer that the contract go through as is.
Mister.
Zero, five, zero?
I have zero, three, one. Is that what you have, Adam?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Zero, three, one. The uh, item, the sale point says really only three changes that occurred in the contract. Uh, one is two and a half G W I increase in each of the three years. Uh, it's retroactive back to July first of this year. Uh, there's a one percent increase in the employee's contribution to the medical expenses in each of the the three years. Uh, and there is an additional um, two hundred plus dollars in each of the years going into their 401 K, their retirement uh, plans. Those are the the key uh, items. Um, this is a bit of a different bargaining unit, has managers across all the departments. Uh, the assistant town attorneys are part of this bargaining unit. Uh, they are unique in that they are not getting the G W I uh, increase. They are getting a one time payment in each of the years um, uh, in 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 lieu of that. We talked about comparing that amount, um, the G W I to uh, other towns, other negotiations, uh, reviewed with Mr. Mason, uh, experience at the state level, uh, both in arbitrated cases as well as negotiated cases. And two and a half is uh, about in the middle. Um, not much better or worse. Um, and so that's consistent across a number of the bargaining units that we now have recently uh, passed um, uh, recent contracts with. We also talked about comparing to outside organizations like, uh, you know, Indeed or others for some of the job descriptions, just to again compare salary levels, uh, what they're making in town versus what's available in the private sector. Didn't find anything that was um, uh, you know, worth discussing. Nothing really seemed out of ordinary. Um, there is some discussion that we had about what's called compression, uh, which is these managers are overseeing staff that based on their contract, the fact that they're earning overtime or double overtime, they may be uh, creeping up and and in fact, you know, maybe at the time being paid the same as that manager. Uh, and so it is something that we're talking to the negoti- the town negotiator with about what can we do, what what creative solutions might we have to um, help uh, avoid those uh, those situations. So our vote was zero, three, one uh, against rejecting the item.
Thank you. Who's going?
Town services?
Oh, town, I'm sorry. You do double duty. Town services.
Just do real quick. What I just said, uh, for Town Services, um, it was one in favor, nine opposed, and zero abstaining. Um, we covered all of that, uh, as part of the labor, uh, the Town Services Agreement discussion. Uh, the one in favor, um, felt that they wanted more information about what would occur in arbitration, what were options there. So one, nine, zero, against rejecting.
Thank you. Greg Zorthian, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee met last Monday with Mike Mason presenting the Launa contract. Covers two hundred and eighty positions. This is a three year, I'm sorry, three year agreement with an option to negotiate a one year extension, extension on salaries in year four. Uh, the vote for uh, the Finance Committee was twelve, zero, zero.
Twelve, zero, zero, or zero, twelve, zero?
The vote was zero, twelve, zero.
Thank you. And uh, James Waters, Chairman of our Budget Overview Committee.
Okay. The Budget Overview Committee voted zero, ten, one to reject item nine. Mike Mason attended our meeting as well. I will not repeat information that's already been shared. However, I will flag um, that uh, this is a fairly large contract with total costs of approximately one hundred and six million dollars over three years. Um, and we did spend uh, some time discussing the uh, one percent healthcare increase to the healthcare contribution during each year of the contract. Um, we also heard from L C C, um, their vice chair, one of the vice chairs, Glenn Cantor. Uh, and we heard that the contract is unlikely to achieve a better result for the town if taken to arbitration. Overall, B O C felt this was a good outcome, voting zero, ten, one to reject the rejection. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I would note that no one has signed up to speak on this. If anyone does want to speak on the contract, you're welcome to come to the podium. Otherwise, I'm going to come along and call for the vote. Okay. If you are in favor, remember this contract is worded to reject, right? So if you are in favor of rejecting the contract, you would vote yes. That would send it to arbitration. If you do not want to reject the contract, you would vote no. Okay, is everyone clear what they're doing with this one? Okay, Craig, could you please prepare the vote? Okay, so again, if you want to reject the contract, send it to arbitration, you would vote yes. If you do not want to reject, you would vote no. Could you please open the the voting window, Craig? Okay, you're free to vote now. Has everyone cast their vote that intended to? Okay, I don't see anyone saying that they haven't. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay, I have the vote on the Launa contract. Those in favor of rejecting, nine opposed, one hundred and sixty-seven abstaining, eight. That item has failed. Craig, could you please show the vote? There you go. Okay, that brings us to item number ten, which is the Bruce Park Historic District. It is currently before us as a second read, so we do not have it introduced. May we have the committee reports that considered this item, beginning with Dan Quigley of our Land Use Committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Hello, everyone in the RTM. The Land Use Committee had Andrew Malillo, who was the Secretary of the Historic District Committee, come down to our committee to present this, and he was really helpful. I know there were some questions at the end of last meeting with regard to this, and people were a little bit confused with some of the wording. It was a little bit complex. Andrew provided us with a lot of emails that I think a lot of you in the RTM may have seen over the last month as well that were also very helpful. So thanks to Andrew to come to the meeting to do that. He noted that Bruce Park would be the first park in town to receive this designation, and the designation would maintain the historic nature of the park, including the bridges, among other things, so that the historic look of the park would remain consistent in perpetuity. And he noted that the designation fully complies with the POCD, and also thought that this would be a great template to use for other parks in town, possibly in the future, maybe Benny Park or Todd's Point. Mr. Malillo was asked why Bruce Park was chosen, how this would affect nearby owners, and if he thinks this will become a blueprint. He answered on the last part, which I already explained that he did think it'd be a blueprint. And he said that Bruce Park has a unique history and is heavily frequented, and he believes that other parks may qualify, but the residents will now be the drivers of any new applications. They were heavily involved in this process. So the Land Use Committee, after hearing Andrew's presentation, voted twelve, zero, zero, to approve.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative Rules Committee?
A good evening, Madam Chairman, fellow members and guests. Legislative Rules Committee met last Monday evening and took up item ten. We had to help us Stephen Bishop, the Chairman of the Greenwich Historical District Commission, Andrew Malillo, the Secretary, Jenny Larkin, a member, and Kate Lebalbo, Chair of Parks and Recreation, and also a long-term resident of District Two. Mr. Bishop provided context to our proposed resolution. He noted that Bruce Park was granted to the town more than one hundred years ago and was uniquely designed property central to the activities of Greenwich residents. Mr. Bishop referred to the recent POCD report, which underscores the desire of Greenwich residents to preserve open spaces and that the designation would also protect the exterior of any buildings within the specified area. For example, there's some expectation that some operations will be moved to the mosquito barn. What operations are taken inside the barn will not be affected, but the historic property designation will require approval in order to make any changes to the exterior. Amending the local ordinance to introduce Bruce Park, to include Bruce Park as a historic property would provide local authority that will supervise state jurisdiction by the Connecticut Siting Council. This amended ordinance has the support of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Parks and Recreation, and the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Bishop sees it as a win-win for the town. The question was asked, why do we need this? Mr. Bishop responded that an intensive study was conducted to provide support for the park's addition to the list of historic properties, but the belief that such designation would offer a layer of protection from development in the future. Kate Lebalbo, in her capacity as Chair of Parks and Recreation, and a longtime district, as I mentioned, noted that whenever Source insisted on running overhead power lines through Bruce Park in 2015, the town had no documentary support for its push for a more aesthetic solution, and that listing this as an historic property would have added a tool to the town's toolkit that would be used in its negotiations with EverSource. There was a hard-won committee compromise, sorry, hard-won compromise, which was ultimately resulting in the green footbridge in the park. But that was not the aesthetic that everyone was hoping for. Also, it should be noted that when the property was first granted to the town, it was well beyond the borders now set by I-95. But when the federal government began the creation of the interstate system, a big chunk of the park was lopped off. And in the report that you received in the explanos are some maps that show parts of the park actually being located north of I-95. Those are no longer part of this property. They were a result of the lopping off process. There was some discussion about the four tracks which will make up the property. Again, if you looked in the report, there are various maps that are shown. The actual map, which shows the properties it's now going to be, is page one hundred and ninety-five in a one hundred and ninety-five-page report. In other words, it's the last map. That will show you the four tracks. The tracks are based on tax parcels that now exist, so the tracks will match up with the property's tax description. As noted, this is the first park that will be designated as an historic property. The, it was noted that, oh, I'm sorry, a current member of the Historic District Commission noted that the commission is comprised of individuals with a variety of interests and expertise, including architects, and they will be very careful and very responsive to any proposals to make any changes. We then noted that the description of the location of the ordinance says it's Article Seven. But there's no articles. Our ordinance begins with chapters and then articles, and this is really in Chapter Six, Article Sevens. So we had to change the language of the introduction. And we made, Legislative Rules made a motion to amend it, which was adopted unanimously, and I will make that motion at the appropriate time. The vote then on the legal order as amended was eleven, zero, zero, and on the merits was ten, one, zero. District eleven, voting no, as a member felt that the designation might prove impractical in the future development of recreational facilities for the town.
Thank you. Catherine Lebalbo, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee?
Good evening, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM. Your Park and Recreation Committee met last Tuesday to discuss the item before us on Bruce Park. I'm often not a particular fan of the second read rule, but in this case, I think it was incredibly useful for our members to convene again and take up this item. We had voted on it previously, eleven, zero, zero, and we voted on it again last week. Eleven, zero, zero was the vote. Sorry, louder? Louder. The vote was eleven, zero, zero. The Park and Rec Committee often traditionally balances passive and active space. When looking at this ordinance, we discussed a lot of what-ifs, how could, playgrounds, we know the park, we know the roadways, and we know that this park has a unique asset, unlike, you know, we have other parks, Benny, Palmerant, Babcock Preserve. All of these parks came up in our very well-rounded discussion, and I wanted to thank all the members for spending almost an hour on discussing the merits of this item. Again, the vote was eleven, zero, zero. It was eleven, zero, zero the previous month as well, your Park and Recs Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger, would you like to offer those two Scrivener errors corrections?
Beginning with the resolve, resolve that, then insert the words Chapter Six, then continue Article Seven of the Code of Ordinances, go through the end of that paragraph. Then the second, next paragraph is SEC Section Blank. The, this particular part of the ordinances lists various properties that are designated as historic. The first one is six dash three, two, one, then six dash three, two, two, then six dash three dash one, three, six, three, two, four, two, six, sorry, Section Six, three, two, three, dash, two. Continuing that process didn't make any sense to us, so we made it Section Six, dash, three, two, four. So fill in the blank with the number six, five, and three, two, four.
Okay. Does everyone understand those two minor Scrivener errors by Legislative Rules? You good? Okay, those can be adopted upon unanimous consent. Otherwise, we could take a record vote. Does anyone object to those two changes being offered by Legislative Rules, which are to insert Chapter Six before Article Seven in the first resolved clause, and then to fill in the blank with section, and this would be the new six, dash, three, two, four. Anyone object to that? Okay, hearing no objection, those two Scrivener errors can be adopted upon unanimous consent. Debate on item number ten. Mr. Bishop and Mr. Malillo, you are the two individuals that have signed up to speak. Would you care to say anything?
Good evening. I'm Stephen Bishop, and I'm Chairman of the Historic District Commission. And I just want to say that obviously I support this. I think it will be a great way to protect this park, which is very historic. It's the oldest park in town. It was donated by Mr. Bruce in nineteen oh eight. And he put a huge amount of work into making this park. It's not just, it just happened like that. He made it that way, and he spent a lot of money to do that. I think we will really need to honor that and protect it in the future. You know, this will protect this property. It doesn't mean that it's locked in stone, that it can never be a change. Any change would just have to be approved by the Historic District Commission. And we try to work everything out as amicably as we can, and usually are quite successful. It doesn't affect any of the abutting property owners. And so far, it's been approved by everybody that's been asked. State Preservation Council, the Greenwich Preservation Network, the Board of Selectmen, the Greenwich Preservation Trusts, P&amp;Z, Parks and Rec, and Historic Properties of Greenwich. So I think everybody thinks that this will be a great thing for this park and that we'll continue to enjoy it for a long, long time, forever, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Malillo, would you like to add anything?
Only because I took the time to write it, I will, very briefly. So if you ask the person living in the nineteen forties in the prime of their life how to describe Bruce Park, they would describe it without ninety-five whizzing through it or an industrial green bridge over the quiet waters of Davis Mill Pond. The goal of this designation is to allow any and all proposed work to proceed in a greater transparent public forum and to proceed in the appropriate manner so the park remains in perpetual use as a park to maintain its aesthetic character and establish greater preservation and protection over its natural and historical charm. Does anyone want to see thirty-foot-high power lines over it? Does anyone want to see a massive town stockyard for heavy machinery, industrial supplies dominating over those graceful green grassy knolls or tucked behind the ancient rock ledge? This, the oldest town park, is asking you to preserve its space, protect its heritage and beauty. And when I want to personally impress someone with the beauty of Greenwich, what's one of the first places I take them? It's Bruce Park. So I therefore encourage all of you to be the RTM and the generation of citizens of this town to put the protections and preservation protections on this, the oldest park and the pride of place, I think, of Greenwich.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to say anything before I call for the vote? Okay. Craig, would you please prepare the voting window? Okay. If you are in favor of an ordinance that creates the historic property designation for Bruce Park, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. You have one minute on the clock. Craig, could you please open the window? Okay. Everyone voted who wants to vote? We're good? Okay. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay, the vote on the historic property designation is a hundred and seventy-six in favor, four opposing with one abstention. That item has carried. And in more spooky news, the Dodgers are winning three to zero in the third inning. And as a Red Sox fan, I couldn't be more delighted about that. Item eleven. Oh, Craig, could you please share the vote? There you go. Okay. Item eleven, which is our final item of the evening, is the appropriation of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and thousand dollars for traffic signal upgrades. And Janet Stone-McWiggan will be introducing that for us.
Thank you. That's right. On behalf of the Department of Public Works, I'm here to read item eleven as it appears on the call. Resolved that the sum of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred dollars be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the following account, to be determined.
Oh, I think you lost the mic.
Whoops, okay. Where'd you lose me? Added to the following account, TBD, to be determined, and to be known as CCGP for traffic signals upgrades.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with Cheryl Moss, Chair of our Public Works Committee?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Moderator, members and guests. Your Public Works Committee took up the call, item eleven, that the sum of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred dollars be appropriated to one account to be known as CCGP for traffic signal upgrades. Deputy Commissioner of Public Works Jim Michael and Gabriella, I'm going to mispronounce her name, I apologize, Sercosta Kohi, Chief Engineer from DBW were present. Gabriella spoke about the proposed safety improvements at three intersections, Field Point Road, Railroad Avenue. Field Point Road, Railroad Avenue, Field Point and Horse Neck Prospect, and Prospect and Railroad Avenues. The money is a C I P grant to cover one hundred percent of the project and fund it upfront. This is a request to create create a C I P account whereby D P W can then spend down on the proposed plan. The plan to improve signals and push buttons for ADA-compliant pedestrian safety crossings as part of the town's transition plan. D P W initially applied to the State Department of Transportation for a community connectivity grant, which was not awarded. The B E T also removed the twenty-four, twenty-five C I P for the funding of this project, but said to come back if a grant was obtained. On the second round, with some help from our state reps, D P W obtained the C I P grant to cover one hundred percent of the cost. The project is expected to be completed this time next year. In our committee, one member raised the point that we must plan projects in order to get funding for capital projects from the state. Another asked where the money came from to design the project before it was funded, and D P W stated that it was designed in-house as well as utilizing some money from the professional services line item of their budget. A question was also asked, why did this, they select these intersections? And D P W stated, these intersections are large pedestrian generators. There have been over two hundred pedestrians in a six-hour period and thirty-one crashes in the past five years. D P W, oh, sorry, excuse me, Public Works Committee voted eleven zero zero. It was voted on by unanimous consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's going next? Greg Zorthean, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. One week ago, Finance met with the with Jim Michaels of D P W and Gabriella Kohe of D P W. They took us through the plan. This plan is three intersections along Field Point Road. It's ADA compliant. There are no bump outs, and they will come in on or under budget, they said, so there is no incremental cost.
Thank you. James Waters, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
The Budget Overview Committee voted eleven zero zero to approve this interim appropriation. We also heard from Chief Engineer Gabriella Sercosta Kohe and Michael Kiselak. Only things I would mention that have not been flagged is that this project is prioritized as part of the town's ADA transition plan as the intersections do not have appropriate signals and do have significant pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Part of the reason this is coming as an interim is the project is ready to go out to bid. It would be expected to start this spring after working through an easement, and the town has a forty-five-day timeline to accept. Again, B O C voted eleven zero zero.
Thank you. Mr. Zorthean, just want to say one more thing.
I neglected to say the Finance vote was twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Anthony Moore, Chairman of our Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Your Transportation Committee reviewed this state-grant-funded traffic signalization plan this last week. We unanimously approved it, eleven zero zero. Of note, this is mainly aimed at a pedestrian access through new crosswalks, updated traffic signals, these are about the oldest in town, and ADA accessibility. And as you've heard before, traffic counts show this is pretty busy this area, about two hundred folks in a six-hour period. They're doing things like going to the train station, ham have school, and the Boys and Girls Club. And I'm sure there are the occasional dog walkers who are coming up from Bell Haven to get out of the enclave there. But, you know, importantly, there are no new sidewalks planned as part of this. And, you know, if you know that area, it's particularly dingy, especially along Field Point Road. And, you know, those sidewalks peter out, and there aren't any when you get to the other side. We did hear from Deputy Commissioner Michael, and we asked him about that. His answer was that they wanted to keep this particular project within budget, and the only budget they had was the state grant budget, which had a max of eight hundred thousand dollars. So they're not ruling out the possibility that we might want to put some sidewalks, especially on Field Point Road, where there aren't any. As some of you may know, it's just a pretty dingy little tunnel there, not terribly pedestrian-friendly, even with the advent of these new signals. But the committee felt that it was important enough for us to support it. And we also asked about timelines. Goal is to compete, complete this project by twenty twenty-five. They do not anticipate a major impact on everyday traffic. As you know, there is an off-ramp there from I ninety-five. There will only be occasional one-lane closures required. So we did approve it unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? No one's signed up, but if anyone wants to come forward? Okay, Craig, this is our final vote of the evening. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? So if you are in favor of the seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred dollar appropriation for traffic signal upgrades, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Yeah, you can open it up. Okay, you have one minute on the clock. Okay, we're going to close the vote. Okay, I have the vote. If you just want to quiet down so I can read it and you can hear it. Those in favor, one hundred and sixty-seven, opposed four, abstaining four, that item has carried. There being no further business this evening, this meeting stands adjourned. I look forward to seeing you all in December.